Good evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council to order. And will everybody please rise and join me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we please have the city clerk do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Gillette.
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Irwin.
Here. And we are going to be moving the schedule around a little bit on item four. The first thing, we are going to pull item 7C from the consent calendar. And it is going to be heard in conjunction with department report 9C. We are also going to, because somebody has a plane to catch, move up item 9A. And we are going to move up public comments. So we will start with public comments, and then we will have item 9A, and then we will go, I'm sorry, to special presentations and announcements. So I am going to call up the public comments, and that's this right here. Can we have the city clerk announce?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Eight people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Okay. I am going to call up the speaker and the next person speaking. And I also would like to remind you that we have a consultant right after that's trying to catch a plane, so you do not have to take your entire time. I'm going to call up Rick Lemo first, and then Debbie Gregory.
Do I have to do anything? There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you're on a tight schedule, so I'll make my comments very brief. You all know what happened just prior to the holiday where we had an out-of-town business owner hire an LA political gun to come into town and convince people to sign a petition with a variety of promises, including the fact that, you know, they would be planting more trees and enhancing the Boulevard. We've all come to find that's not true. And before you later tonight is the certification of those signatures. However, I was told today that a group led by some intervention of our county supervisor, which surprises me on city-oriented issues, a trash hauler who just lost the same type of initiative in Oxnard, and a group of others, including that political consultant, were going to ask you tonight to ignore those signatures and not let this go to a vote of the people the way they originally requested, and ask you instead tonight just to make it law. What I would like to urge you to do is to stay the course. If you find the signatures are in fact certified, let's go ahead and put this special election on the ballot, even though it's going to cost the city money. And then let's get the citizens to have the truth and let them make a decision. And out of respect to the citizens who may have signed those petitions erroneously, and I've talked to quite a few who seem to think that it was a little bit of a silly game, let's let it go to the ballot box and make certain that they hear the truth. And thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lemo. And our next speaker is Debbie Gregory, and she will be followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Gregory, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. It took just one short month for the proponents of the right to vote on traffic congestion initiative to obtain enough signatures. Fifteen percent of all Thousand Oaks registered voters to qualify for the ballot. This initiative is about a great deal more than the proposed Home Depot project. It's about the quality of life here as we know it. It's about allowing the people of this community to decide whether or not they want to live with the impacts of traffic on a particular project. It's about allowing the residents to decide whether or not they want multiple stories of residential condos built to exceed our height limits on top of retail stores on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so that a few property owners can maximize their investments. The initiative is about whether or not we, the people, want to spend our time stuck in horrific traffic, whether or not we want to live with the air pollution and other healthcare impacts from traffic. It's about whether or not we want to become Oxnard or the Valley or something similar. We're only talking about large projects, such as those of 75,000 retail square feet or 100,000 development or specific plans that worsen traffic congestion below a sea level would be subject to this. Projects already approved, such as the Oaks Mall renovation, will not be subject to the initiative. It is important to remember that the triggers before a project goes to a vote are size and significant traffic congestion. The people of the community will have the final say, as they should. If a project has overwhelming merits, then the residents can approve it. And I suspect at the end of the day, we'll have only the very best developments. How many times have we heard members on this very dais tell us they have to vote for a project or the city will be sued? This takes the decision out of their hands and puts it right where it belongs, in the hands of the people, the very people who live with the negative impacts of the traffic. This initiative represents democracy at its finest. Already developer interests have started their campaign of misinformation. They've written letters in the paper saying they don't want to have a vote on every project. Well, they won't. It only pertains to large projects that have negative traffic. I suspect they will try to put another initiative on the ballot to confuse people. I also think the council and city manager need to maintain a neutral position instead of advocates for anything. The scope of the study on the impacts of this initiative mentioned traffic only once. How can this be possible? Our elected officials must have enough respect for those they represent to trust their intelligence and allow them to decide what is in their own best interest. They will tell you the sky is falling and businesses will leave Thousand Oaks. This will not happen. Bigger and more is not always better. Our population is approaching 140,000 people. At what point is it enough? Traffic hurts business, and it hurts people. We all moved here because of the fine quality of life. It's only right for the people to have a say in what is acceptable. We can't go back, but we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Our next speaker is Suzanne Duckett, and she will be followed by Penny Mayou.
Suzanne, Thousand Oaks. At the previous meeting, I was very concerned at the outcome when Mr. Fox did not want to look into eco-friendly infrastructure. I would like the public to really follow this closely and pay attention. They might not be building a structure, but it sounds like they're going to bring the infrastructure into the area. It sounds like they probably want to bring in the electricity, the sewer, the water. And that will open up the floodgate for the county, the adjacent county land. It is not the Rancho Potrero land that we were, that I was ever concerned that houses, homes would be built on. It's the adjacent county land, and I believe that this is Ventura County land. So you can just see all of the development up there on the county land going down the hill to the college. So that is what I'm concerned about, and I would like everybody out there who's concerned about future development on county land to pay attention, to make sure that this group, that the group that was here tonight, goes with eco-friendly, very limited infrastructure. And what Mr. Fox stated to all of you, I think, was incorrect, because that was not our perception, that the homes would be built on Rancho Potrero land. I was at the Spectrum City Hall when a lot of that was approved and bought, purchased. So I remember those days. I also believe in the traffic, putting the traffic issue to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duckett. We have Penny Mayou, followed by Dan Douglas.
Penny Mayou, 1200 Newbury Road. The city council meeting on the 18th, all of you said a lot of positive things. You surprised us as well as the community. I hope all of you were being truthful and sincere, not just trying to impress the city. Mr. Fox, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, came through the park with a few of us. You said, "Call if we have any questions," but nobody returns our calls. So here we are, trying to find out what is happening. Mr. Fox, you told us things that day that differents from what the rest of the city council was saying. We are a little confused as to what is going on. We hope the city stands behind its ordinance as all of us do. We are not going to let our homes be taken away without compensation. And if any of you, or Mr. Bednar disagrees with us, please think again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayou. Our next speaker is Dan Douglas, and he will be followed by Alma Lopez.
Hi. My name is Dan Douglas. I'm from 1200 Newbury Road. You probably recognize me. I get up here all the time talking about the mobile home parks there. And tonight, I have nothing really new to say. I've talked about, you know, the general plan goal, number 10, to protect mobile home parks as an affordable housing resource. And I hope, you know, you still feel that way. And I've talked about the fragile mobile home park residents. I don't know what to say about that. We've talked about the conversion ordinance, you know, but on December 18th, the city council expressed concern that every avenue be explored before the residents are cast adrift, was the words used. And it's not right that we haven't been invited to any of the negotiations between the city and Mr. Bednar. Even Mr. Bednar was surprised that no one was there to represent the mobile home park. I talked to Mr. Bednar, and you're right, Mr. Fox, he is a pretty nice guy. In fact, he told me that he would build whatever the city would like for him to build on this location. And that sounds like a pretty good deal with the trouble of the regional housing needs assessment. Pardon me. Now all that seems to be left is what will happen to our mobile home park residents. You know, I want to trust you all, but it's getting pretty hard when, you know, then again, I've left many messages. If you would check your voicemail, about a half a dozen messages from me. And I am the mobile home park housing, pardon me, I'm having a hard day here. But, you know, I just hope that we're not really cast adrift, and you will consider, you know, all of our well-being when you make all your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Our next speaker is Alma Lopez, and she will be followed by Sean Torres.
Good evening. My name is Alma Lopez. I am a resident of Newbury Park. I am also secretary of the Cuneo Mobile Home Park Association, and I'm here with the same question. Where is the help you promised December 18? No meeting has been scheduled to discuss other options, the alternatives to closing the mobile home park. Is the meeting no longer needed because you've made the decision to close the park? Where is the help? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Our next speaker is Sean Torres, and he will be our last speaker.
Mayor, city council. I'm here today on Cuneo Mobile Home Park, and your priority for the city for 2006 was to save the mobile home parks of Cuneo Valley. For 2007, that has changed, and I don't see that anywhere of the priority of the city trying to help save the mobile home parks here. I see something for RENA and trying to get the numbers for RENA, and we're out of the equation here, it seems like. The laws the city imposed was that we were told that they would not be enforced. The laws that you guys came up with, they're not going to be enforced. We were told the other day we were not going to get fair market value for our homes, that we're going to get somewhere, something in the middle. As far as the last I read, the city law says we're going to get fair market value. We want TPD medium density like the other mobile home parks in the city of Thousand Oaks. We don't want high density where you're going to put a bunch of condos and apartments there. After we get shut down, who's going to be next? Which mobile home park is going to be next? The mobile home parks of, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard? We were told the other day the owner was going to shut the park down. It's already been written in stone. So you guys know the park's going to be shut down, and you've done nothing to try to get it not to be shut down. And I'm wondering why we haven't been in negotiations with the owner and the rest of people here that have been having negotiations with the city. We had this moratorium put in place, and nothing seems to be gotten accomplished in that time. Why now, the last few weeks, we're trying to do something that's kind of at the last minute right now? We were told that apartments would be put in the place of the mobile home parks and that there would be affordable housing. I brought up the fact that all of Joe Bednar's apartments and condos that he's put in the city, not one of those apartments or condos has been affordable housing at all. So I feel when he does put apartments or condos there, those won't be affordable housing either for the city residents. What makes you think that he's going to change his mind now? The other day, when we were at the meeting, Gillette and Bill de la Peña had suggested we explore all alternative ideas. I feel that the people that are, that were put in charge have not explored those alternative On July 24th, 2007, the city council meeting, mobile homes were considered affordable housing, and was stated this by the city council meeting. The city needs to make a law defining what affordable housing is. The planning commission has made up their mind, numbers. That's all they want is numbers. Is that what you guys want? We're not just numbers. We're human beings. We're people. After you make your decision, and it's going to, if it's a negative one, we're not going to go away. We will be coming back to the city council, and we will make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. And then I have one written statement card on a non-agenda item in support of the city negotiating to preserve the Newbury Park wetlands, and that was Clint Mackovich. And I think the city manager has some comments for the mobile home park residents.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we heard from a few speakers about the Cuneo Mobile Home Park situation. In following council direction on this issue, staff working with council member Andy Fox has begun the facilitation role and has had meetings with the owner of the mobile home park, a number of meetings, and one site visit that was referenced, so the council member and staff can better understand the layout of the land and what some of the current issues are. We are in the middle of discussions. There will be a meeting this weekend, January 12th, at 12 noon, at 10 noon, 10 a.m. And information will go out to the residents or the tenants there. And Linda Papastias, the Assistant City Manager, has been working with some of the tenants out there, and she will contact you. So those who are here or watching, if you have any further questions for clarification, contact her. But we remain optimistic that, and all the options are being explored, and we remain optimistic about where we're going. Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to department report 9A. This is taken out of order, and this is the financial strategic plan, the demographics presentation. And Ms. Hong, will you present our speaker?
Last November, council received a calendar of presentations to be made at council meetings scheduled to complete and update the financial strategic plan. City staff arranged for presentations by a demographer, sales tax consultants, economists. Chuck Maxi from CLU is here tonight in our audience, and finance, and finance department staff. Tonight is the first presentation. Doug Robinson will share his study on demographics and the markets, the economic effects of an aging baby boom generation in the city of Thousand Oaks. Given the city of Thousand Oaks demographics, what trends can we expect in the years to come? Doug Robinson has been in the financial industry for over 25 years and has served as founder and president of investment firm. He's also managing director of the San Francisco Public Financing Investment Banking Firm, Sutter Securities, and a registered principal with E. Planning Securities. His company also provides a website that offers finance directors and city treasurers a convenient source to access new agency issues, current U.S. Treasury rates, and economic reports. A weekly market performance report, the Robinson Report, is available to city and county agencies. He's a longtime member of California Municipal Treasurers Association. He's a frequent guest speaker at a number of venues, such as California Society of Municipal Finance Officers and League of California Cities. Mr. Robinson earned his bachelor's of science degree in economics from the University of Missouri Columbia. And one of his current projects is he's co-authoring a book on the economic impact of changing demographics and how to build an effective investment strategy, released for next month. Please welcome Doug, and thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Great. Thank you, Candice, and thank you for your great hospitality since being here in the great city of Thousand Oaks. And thank you for having me, council members, and Scott Mitnick, city manager here for City of Thousand Oaks. So we have a pretty quick presentation. Actually, it's a, it can be a long presentation, but we're going to do it in a kind of a quick period of time. And half of my PowerPoint slides are a lot of background about how to use demographics and how it can be applied to strategically, how it can be applied here to the city of Thousand Oaks. So within the handout that you have, I've amended a few slides. One of the slides we put in there is the demographics for the county here that also wanted to compare not just local data, but also county data. So that's also added in your new handout. So without further ado, and we're going to go through this at a pretty quick pace. So the first slide that you're going to see is, as soon as this slide comes up, is, this is again, about half the presentation is going to be background information, so that we can get kind of a foundation for how you can use your local demographics to aid in looking at how your situation here has affected your economy and how maybe this can be applied to your strategic planning through the finance department. So the graph you see in front of you now is taken from U.S. Census and immigration data, and it shows when immigrants to this country and U.S. citizens were born. You see that very large surge in the middle? That's between birth years 1938 and 1964, and it's a generation we refer to as, and this is usually where everybody says, yes, it's the baby boomers. That's us, most of us here in this room. The little peak over there to the left is the baby boomer's parents, or the G.I. Joe generation, Bob Hope generation, however you want to refer to them. Little peak over to the right, very good, John, is the echo boom generation, or the baby boomers' kids, and that's the peak in 1990. So why is it so important to know, at least here on a national basis, when somebody was born? You know, we can all send them birthday cards, but what it's really important to know is that we as people, as groups of people in particular, are very predictable on what we do as we age. Now, we maybe know that intuitively, but the Bureau of Labor Statistics has been conducting what's called a consumer expenditure survey since the early 80s, and they know pretty much everything about us. They know what we buy, when we buy it, where we buy it, down a neighborhood block, and specifically at what age we do do that. We buy that particular product, or have that service, or go through that certain life stage in our life. Now, I'm going to walk through this data. Now, this is average age, so don't feel bad if, as we go through these points, that you say, wow, I've done that. I must be very average. I know I've hit just about every one of these points. So it's very logical that if you're going to enter college, you're going to do so at age 18. At 21, 22, you enter the workforce. At 25 and a half, finally, your parents kick you out, and you get your first apartment. At age 26, you get married, on average, for the first time. Age 27, you have your first child, 27, 28. Your needs grow, your family grows. Age 32 to 33, you buy your first home. It's also the point in your life where you're borrowing the most amount of money ever relative to your income to buy that first home. Your family grows, your needs grow, your income grows. Age 43, 44, you buy that second home, that trade-up home, that family home. Now, it's very important to remember that as later on, we look here at the unique dynamic age distribution within Thousand Oaks, that early 40-year-old. Age 47 to 49, on average, we peak, excuse me, on our overall family spending. Now, that's also extraordinarily important to know, when, on average, we peak in our spending. From that point down forward, we actually turn from spenders to savers. A couple of the things we do spend more on, you know, as our kids go off to college, we've got more disposable income. We love to go out to dinner. Age 52 to 54, we're flourishing out in great restaurants. We're also saving like crazy because we're looking forward to retirement. It's also a great time we can go out and buy that resort home or vacation home. But we are looking forward to the retirement date, which on average happens at age 63. And if we're going to get a retirement home, we'll do so on average at 65. Now, real quick before I go on, forget about how much you love your kids. If you go back to the front of this chart, I usually ask this question of big audiences. What are you doing, what are your kids doing before they leave the nest? Well, they're eating out of house and home, right? They're huge and growing expense, and they're consuming everything, but what are they producing? And that's a big zero. So I always like to explain how inflation happens, and it's because you have this massive generation of baby boomers that happened in the 60s and 70s that simply overwhelmed our parents' ability to produce, and it caused inflation. And when the early 80s, when all of us got into the workforce and could produce for what we needed, we've had this whole, basically decade and two decades and a half of disinflation, all the way down from the 80s all the way to now. So it's something to think about when you think of inflation versus disinflation and possibly deflation, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Now, I'm going to try to talk a little faster so we can get through this. You can have some fun with the very specific data that the consumer survey asks. So, and I usually ask this to an audience, what's the average age where potato chip sales peak? It's one of my favorite slides. And it happens to be in our early 40s. Okay. So you've got a bunch of 40-year-olds sitting around the couch packing in the chips. Sounds good. But what's really happening is that we got married at 26, on average, had our first child at 27. 14 years later, when that child's reaching the highest caloric intake of its lifetime, or of its childhood, they're packing in the chips. But who has the money? The parents do. And so potato chip sales peak then. There's also another very interesting demographic purchasing, and that's on motorcycles. And there's a very specific demographic demand for expensive motorcycles between age 46 and 49, exactly when the average male, well, and female, might be having their midlife crisis. And I show these examples to show, to at least get an idea that, well, if I'm a Harley dealer, wouldn't I want to know when a generation is peaking, and maybe when a smaller generation is taking over later? Now, I've done this presentation enough times where one group asked, well, what happens when you turn 60? Do you just go flatline? Well, hopefully not. You may not be buying a motorcycle, but you want to be still out on the road, and you'll go get yourself an RV. But not just any RV, a very expensive RV. So there's, again, a very specific demographic demand in your late 50s to your early 60s on very expensive motorhomes. So again, this is just individual data, how you can use this to find consumer demand for specific products. So to review what I've just talked about, you enter the workforce in your early 20s, you make and spend more money up until your late 40s, and it does crest into your early 50s, and then for the rest of your life, you spend less money. Now, does anybody see retirement in that picture? No, because you saved going to retirement, and then you spend those savings. Now, I usually ask this to an audience is, what's one thing that you spend more money on as you age? And everybody says healthcare. Very good. And that's right. I don't have a slide here, but it basically goes like this. You spend more and more money as you, of course, want to stay alive, and then about age 78 to 83, well, demand drops off. So certain things that you could use with this information, some of them not so pleasant. Let's go ahead and go to the next. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. One of my favorite charts, what this is, this comes from Harry Dent. What he did is he took the Immigration Adjusted Birth Index, colored red, pushed forward to peak spending. So, it's a lot of, it's hard for people to see this, but the top of that middle bulge there, that's the baby boom generation, reaches the peak in overall spending in this country right about here. It actually peaks to 2010. So, what Harry Dent also did is he took the Dow adjusted for inflation and found that there's a very high correlation between peak spender in the economy and the Dow adjusted for inflation. There's a .93 correlation, that's a very high correlation between those two movements. It's kind of logical that if you have more peak spenders in the economy, the economy does well, and eventually, the stock market reflects it. If you have fewer peak spenders in the economy, then, of course, the economy reflects it, and eventually, the stock market does too. So, going on to the next slide, the whole basis for this presentation is that consumption is everything. And what this demonstrates here, this is national GDP data, and it's taking consumer expenditure. We stripped out inflation, and since the early 2000s is a 45-degree line, it's very hard to see, but this is monthly data, 2001, September, terrorist attacks, spending stopped, but it turned right around in October because we couldn't suppress our necessary family spending. And it's been a wonderful 45-degree line all the way through one of the biggest bear markets in history in the early 2000s. Again, war, high energy prices, hurricanes, but we've still had this consumer that has no choice but spend because of its family. So, one thing we really want to know, though, is what, where is this chart going? That's really, really important for us because consumer spending is 70% of our economy, which is, here for Thousand Oaks, is one of the largest revenue producers here for the city. So, it's really important to know the direction of where the consumer is headed. Now, we've had a recession in this country that happened, it didn't happen in 2000, by the way, a lot of people like to tell us because we didn't have two quarters in a row where it went down, because you can see here that the consumer never stopped. But on the next slide, we can see the last recession we had was in the early 90s. Now, we could have predicted this by demographics alone. Back in the early 90s, the peak spender was age 46, 47. Well, what was happening in the country, or the world for that matter, 46, 47 years prior to 1990, 91, World War II? There was a 7% drop-off and burst during that period, so fast forward to early 90s, you have a recession, and it happened immediately follow when most of us baby boomers here bought our first home. I know, I bought the top, 1989. Where did prices go for a couple of years after that? They tanked. It also determined who was president of the country. George Bush, 41, nothing he could do right or wrong. He could not get reelected, threw him out. Nothing Bill Clinton could do right or wrong. He came under tremendous demographic surge all the way through the 90s, and of course, then with the technology boom also. Incredible period of time. So, let's go on to the next slide, which is, again, I want to throw this in for background information, the second-largest country in the world, Japan, this is a pretty far place away from Thousand Oaks, but it's very important to look at this because Japan's demographics, they had a surge, a very tiny surge of population right after World War II than a big bust. So, when that generation reached the peak in their spending in the late 80s and that smaller generation took over, there's nothing that the Bank of Japan could do to stimulate demand because the consumer demand wasn't there. And so, all from the peak of the Nikkei Dow, Nikkei Dow in December of 89, 39,000, for 15 years, all the way it went down to 7,000, consumer spending was, they were in and out of recession. And what always fascinates me, this happened during a period where we're booming, and Japan exports 25% of what they make, and we're buying it. So, you can have a growing world, but if your local demographics is not in that peak phase of spending, you can end up in a series of recessions like Japan did. Okay, on to some more good news. This slide, throwing everything in here but the kitchen sink, but this slide is on real estate. And this comes from Robert Schiller, Yale professor. He wrote, you probably all heard about the book, Irrational Exuberance, and he wrote the second book on real estate called Irrational Exuberance, Number Two. And so, what he found is if, he took real estate prices for the country, adjusted them to inflation rate, and he found that over this long period of time, that housing prices follows inflation. That's pretty logical because as prices go, that is a hard asset, real estate, it goes with it. But since 2000, we've had this incredible surge in housing, this is nationwide and very particularly here, but we haven't had the same effect from inflation. The next slide shows that if you look at incomes, housing prices should follow incomes. Logical, the more money you make, the more of a house you should be able to afford. Since 2000, housing has way outpaced incomes. So, if you believe in regression to the mean, which you should start to think about, in these last two slides, we either want to have inflation come up or incomes come up, maybe though, it goes the other way, maybe we have housing contract. Now, these slides are a couple of years old, and we have seen real estate start to contract. And maybe in the question-answer period here, later on, if we have time to talk about where I think real estate prices go, we can do so. But this is just another lesson in how you can use some of these long-term cycles along with demographics. Because as a country here, that first, it's one of the first slides we saw, we peaked in our overall family spending for a big home back to, exactly, under between 2003 and 2005. As a country, we peaked in that demand. So, we have to keep that in mind. Let's go on to the next slide. Now, we're getting into the local demographic data, and basically, what I've done here is I just looked at national income levels and education levels and found out that Thousand Oaks is really, really ahead of the curve. There's just about twice as many college degrees here as a percentage of population from bachelors and higher than there is for the country. It just so happens, too, that median family income is just about twice as high. But also, if you can see, it's difficult to see in this graph, but I put in there real estate prices for Thousand Oaks and the country. Real estate in 2000 here, the average or the median price was 325,000. In 2006, that went to 750,000. That's 130% increase, while incomes rose 21% from 77,000 to 93,000. Okay? For the country, for the country, and I've forgotten the number, so someone's going to have to point this out, I believe it's 120,000 for the country in 2000, it went to 185,000 in 2006, that's a 55% increase, where incomes for the country rose 15%. So, this does suggest, like the other slide that we saw about housing prices exceeding income levels, but it's been extreme here in Thousand Oaks. By the way, it's been extreme in a lot of places in California, too. So, let's go on to the next one. We can come back to some of this data. Now, we're looking at the demographic distribution in blue and vertical bars there, that's the country, that's the United States in 1990. The red line is Thousand Oaks age distribution, also in 1990. What strikes me is, back then, you had a whole bunch of early 40-year-olds, that's the most amount of people you had here in Thousand Oaks, and a few kids there, too, while the rest of the country is that peaked in that baby boom generation in their early 30s. So, Thousand Oaks is literally 10 years ahead of the curve here. I'm not really sure what that means, other than there's a lot of 40-year-olds that really want to be here, and that might become more evident as we keep talking about this. And if we look at the next slide, fast forward to 2006, so we're 16 years later, and lo and behold, the country caught up to Thousand Oaks. You have a surge of the baby boom generation here in 2006, and, well, I'm going to talk more about this in subsequent slides, but you can see a little peak over there to the left, those are the kids here in Thousand Oaks. Let's go to the next slide because I'm going to build this chart again. Let's look back here, 1999, oldest peak generation here are the 40s. Let's go to the next slide. 2000, 10 years later, aha, the 40-year-olds put 10 more candles on their birthday cake. In fact, you can see from about, excuse me, 40 on to 50, you just about kept that whole generation. So, a lot of people stayed here past 40. But what happened? Ooh, jeez, where'd the 20-year-olds go? Well, they became 30, but nobody replaced them. So, there's a very large drop in 20-year-olds, but finally, you see that left hump over there, the kids start to show up. So, finally, the baby boomers are showing up with their kids or having kids. So, let's go to the next slide, and this is great. This is really interesting. This is 2006. What this shows here is because of, and this is my opinion, because it's so attractive to be here in Thousand Oaks, to raise a family, you're having all of these 40-year-olds having their kids come with them. So, there's been a lot of migration here through this last decade to come here, buy your second home, buy your family home, which is probably one of the reasons that prices have gone up so high here, and your kids have shown up. Now, if we go to the next slide, I just put on there that, hey, yeah, the boomers have boomed. The boomers are here, and their kids are here. So, I just find that very interesting. I don't see that in too many places where there's such a peak between the two and no 20-year-olds. So, the only assumption is that when the kids go away to school, they don't come back, but as they age, they may not be able to buy the first home here in their 30s, but they love to come here to buy that second home, to, you know, ultimately, put together that family home and really raise their kids here. That's what this is telling me. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. Now, it's obviously had an effect on your largest school district here. Since 1990, there's this surge of kids that came in, right? Well, because you have such a surge and then a decline from the baby boomers having their kids, and they're probably trying not to have anymore, so you've had this drop-off and burst that did quite a severe degree, that will show up in your school enrollment. And so, this is my projection in red, that approximately 5,000 kids of enrollment will decline in the next 10 years. And that, I'm just assuming that there's not another birth wave or there's a large immigration wave with kids coming in. Yeah, you're right, Mr. Fox. I do doubt that the general picture of age distribution throughout the country suggests that you've got a much, much smaller generation there. You're still going to want to have people move here because this is a desirable place to raise your family. No economic condition will mitigate that away. So, the desirability to be here is, will always be here. It's going to be a question of affordability will be probably one, and availability. But it's hard to take away those cycles. So, we were talking earlier that you'll have these schools and, you know, put it this way, you'll have plenty of community centers to turn these schools into, and maybe the next generation, you can close down those community centers and reopen them up as schools. Let's go ahead and look at a few more. Let's start talking about the revenues. So, like I mentioned earlier, and thank you Finance Department for providing all this information, we took sales tax revenue way back to the late 70s, and then your two other major contributors to the revenue stream here, which is vehicle license fees and then also property tax. But by far, your major contributor is sales tax. It's about 40%. And if you add in the vehicle license fees, you're about 53% of revenue. So, it's really, 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 really important to know where those trends are headed. Now, the great thing about Thousand Oaks is that they've always been, you've always been ahead of the curve. When I looked at consumer expenditures and indexed both, all of those items, well, I indexed sales tax with consumer expenditure, and when I let this run, I found that you're very high correlation. And then in the 90s, you just took off. Now, your average growth rate is very, it's very close to 9%, very, very high. And of course, we're not stripping out inflation, much higher than the overall country for their consumption, right? The last six years, it's been slightly under the U.S. Okay, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but, you know, maybe you just went up so much, maybe because your generation is in that plateauing stage of consumption, maybe you're just losing that momentum, like the rest of the country will be shortly, of increase in expenditures. Because as a country, we're very, very close to converting from necessary family spenders to savers. And we haven't had to go through that with the size of generation ever in the history of our country. And if we look at what Japan went through, you know, it's going to be a challenging time next decade. Some people could say it's opportunity, which it could be, depending on how you want to look at it. You know, certain values may be down, stock market values, land prices, business prices, certain times where you can actually come in and buy great value. But, you know, I don't want to turn this into an investment talk here, but there's certain things that you probably don't want to be leveraged going into this more tougher condition. So, let's go ahead and keep advancing and see if we've got some more things to talk about. One of the things I would look at as regards to sales taxes, where those dollars are being The recent retail sales numbers for the country came out surprisingly high in November, 6.6% year-over-year. Now, there's a lot of people talking about a recession out there, but 6.6% year-over-year is not bad. What I did here with these three lines, if you look at the red line, we didn't get a whole lot of help from the brick-and-mortar stores. Where a lot of growth came from was online sales. There's over, is a 10.6% year-on-year growth rate for online. So, at some point down the road, for people that are clicking and buying them, we're all guilty of this, we're supposed to pay a user tax when we buy an item, send our check up to the state, but I don't know of anybody who does that. At some point, we'll have to tax the Internet and maybe harness some of this leakage that's probably occurring here and elsewhere. So, I would expect to see that law change at some point. So, maybe there's a few dollars out there for you to, even when we change our overall And here's your mix, if you break out the sales tax revenues, still, car sales, vehicle sales are exceeding regular consumer items. You've got a great selection of dealerships here in the city. What's interesting to note, even though these are, they're losing their momentum, these larger consumption numbers, car sales, according to the Consumer Expenditure Survey, actually peaks for expenditures in your early 50s. So, there's some hope out there that, you know, the head of household who's going to be turning early 50s here within a couple of years, still wants to get that really, really nice, expensive vehicle, and it's going to help out, you know, some of the revenues coming through the, you know, selling of those vehicles. Consumer items, that will be under a little bit of pressure, too, because, of course, they're going to be shifting from overall spending to saving. Some of these other contributors are so much less to the impact of the city, but they're still there. Very difficult to see, I apologize for that, but you have, I can't even read it, so, I put all this data in there. Oh, you're going to save me, John, thank you. But they were building permits, fuel, and hotel hospitality, and healthcare. So, this is one of the, one of the, a couple of the last slides I have going. This is the same line that we saw for 2006 age distribution for Thousand Oaks. I just use the vertical lines here again. But it really does show the dramatic change in these generations. Again, that peak there where John's pointing to, that's us baby boomers, and over to the left is the echo boom, there's your, John's pointing to the bust, the, there's your peak, thank you, John, that's your peak echo boomer right there. And there's just this void of 20-year-olds. So, again, I think people who live in a community can see that. It's, you know, it's just not where a 20-year-old is right now. There's 3,100 students next door here at the local community college. They're there, they're showing up in the data, but we need, you need a lot more of them. But if, if, one thing we got to be careful with this is that we don't want to take this chart and push it forward is that we don't wanna take this chart and push it forward twenty years and say, oh my goodness, we're gonna end up with fifty percent fewer peak spenders in twenty years from now. That, that would be a dangerous thing to do. Because it's evident in your past that forty-year-olds come here. They love to come here. They wanna move to Thousand Oaks. So I wouldn't be too worried that the same dynamic is gonna be occurring forever. Now, your, the kids over there, the baby boomers, well, they're gonna go to college, wherever, they're gonna be gone. So you're gonna lose those gr- that, those groups, right? That group. But let's use the word hope. Uh, they find their way back. Maybe at some point, they can afford a, a new home here in their thirties, but certainly, the trend has been that they'll come here in their forties. Okay? So, and it doesn't, also in the other data, I think I mentioned this, it doesn't appear that anybody leaves in your past fifty. You stay here in Thousand Oaks. It's a good thing. It's just that you may wanna start thinking about, um, and we were talking about this earlier, about changing the swing sets to shuffleboard. Um, start looking at this whole aging of population within the baby boomer community. What are they gonna need or what, what are you not gonna need to, to deliver? And let's look at the last slide. And this shows, uh, Ventura County. So Ventura County has an exaggerated US-type distribution. Uh, you can see on the right there again, the pa- peak baby boomer generation. On the left there, you can see the, the kids. But you, they still have this downdraft, and it happens to be thirty years old here for the county on average. I mean, it is, that's the dad at thirty. So that's your first-time home buyer. There's, there's twenty percent plus less of those folks. Now, um, a couple of months ago, I did this for Oxnard, and they're different there. Very young population. In fact, uh, if I had the chart here of India, you would say it looks like Oxnard. There's younger and younger groups of people, a lot of twenty-year-olds, a lot of kids. You can hardly make out any dip at all looking at Oxnard. So it's pretty logical. You go to some places that you can afford when you're young, um, and where you can buy your first home and where you can stay. Yeah. So I'll, I'll end on the last chart here. And, um, I, we can look out decades into the future by examining demographics and consumption cycles. And, and this does suggest that there's still a great economy. Well, we're approaching the end of the great economy. I hate to say it this way. Um, as far as, uh, equity markets are concerned, now, this is maybe a different discussion for another time, but, uh, there could be a meltup in the equity markets is my perception because we're still have a lot of pent-up leverage for, uh, the equity markets here. But then we've gotta be very careful going into next decade because of this shift from spenders to savers. Um, again, there, there's opportunity in this downturn, but we haven't had this as a country, um, really ever. This, we had one in the thirties. Um, and this is something similar. It won't be the same, but it, it does have the same kind of busts characteristics. Um, my estimate, it, it'll look something like Japan, where you may not go to a deflationary depression, but you might have a series of recessions. Um, real estate levels could return nationally, maybe different here, to levels we saw in two thousand. So real estate levels could be down fifty, sixty, seventy percent. Maybe here in Thousand Oaks, maybe they were down forty or fifty percent. Um, and that, that shouldn't be too much of a surprise to a lot of people. Because as we saw in the other data, there wasn't, there wasn't a hundred and thirty percent more people that moved here uh, or made that much more money. It was just a perfect storm for real estate, not just here, but across the country of the peak, uh, demand cycle for the baby boomer between two thousand and three and two thousand and five. A lot of easy credit from the banking community. If you had a heartbeat, you could get a loan. And then the perception that there's no risk in real estate, and it was just the perfect ingredients for a, a bubble. And that's essentially what we've created here. So, um, yeah, you'll have to look at that for property taxes too going forward if, if properties were bought recently. Uh, certainly, somebody that bought six, seven years ago is not gonna come rushing in to, uh, to, to get another valuation on their property because we may, we may not come back to those levels. Uh, but I'd be more concerned about, um, some of the consumption patterns, some of the sales tax patterns. And when Finance Department starts to, you know, grapple with this, with this information and other presentations, the challenge will be to identify those trends and to, to open up what those expectations are. Um, not down ten percent, not down five percent, but maybe some kind of a range going through this challenged period from essentially two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-two. And you can see that little turn up. We hit, hit that trough that's between two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two. And then our kids, the echo boomers, start to get into their consumption cycle. And they, they pull us out of this. So we have ten or twelve years of a challenged economic condition. And then our, our kids are our saviors, I guess we can call them. They come and start their cycle and we have happy days again. So with that, I think I'll, I think I'll stop here and then if there's any questions, we can go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Russ. Mr. Robinson, that was very informative. Do we have any questions or comments? No.
It was that good.
It was that thorough.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Thanks. Mr. Robinson, can, maybe you can, um, uh, talk a little bit more about the issue you raised between the housing prices, uh, in, in the extreme and the income levels, uh, 'cause as you pointed out, uh, that, that is certainly, uh, an issue that we have here in Thousand Oaks. And then, uh, in your last slide, I was struck by somewhere around two thousand and ten, if I understood you right, we can actually look at a decline in, uh, the housing, uh, market with respect to equity and, and value of home and, and.
Yes.
All right. Um, it seems to me that that may be a design for disaster in some, in some way here.
Yes, it, it, you're right, Mr. Fox. It's, it's the other side of this great, great economy that's been assembled by us. And, uh, it's really, it's a bubble boom economy. So we've, you know, we've enjoyed the, this constant stream of more and more of us entering our consumption cycle. And really, for the, for the first time in our modern history, if we were as a generation turning over into saver. So all these things seem to hit at the same time. Technically, real estate did peak between two thousand and three and five. It, it just went much further than it would have normally at the end of that cycle only because perception of no risk in real estate and also the availability, well, for capital. And, you know, history is laden with markets that get over-capitalized and there's, there's perception of no risk. And, you know, real estate's not an exception, so.
How does that affect, um, well, two questions that, that come to mind. One would be, uh, certainly at the county level. Um, you have a house that's worth seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then, uh, in a four or five period of, uh, year period of time, it may be worth half that or, or.
Yeah, it, it, well, to answer that this way.
How's that affect property tax in the county?
It, it'll be a challenge. Um, in Japan, again, this isn't Japan, but they did go through a demographic drop like we're about to. And under a backdrop of a pretty good world economy, at least from us being buyers of their products. Um, and their prices nationwide dropped fifty percent from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and three. Uh, Tokyo properties dropped sixty-seven percent. It took a long time, though. It was an agonizing thirteen years essentially, twelve, thirteen years. Um, it, it may be different here. It may be that, you know, we, we deleverage faster uh, because we do need to deleverage. Um, you know, valuations on income of property relative to what the property is valued at or.
Right.
In extreme multiples. So, you know, as we contract to this again, um, regression to the mean, if you'll call it. Um, you know, we have a tendency as, in world markets, to correct even further than maybe it should. I don't know if real estate's gonna do that. Um, but I, I think there's a, put it this way. We don't have the wind at our back, okay? We don't have the bodies of people to continue to pour into that demand cycle. So, you know, we, we can't get out of any correction because there isn't that fundamental demand behind us.
And if I, if I followed your, um, your demographic with respect to age, uh, at the, about the time, again, generally, you're paying your home off in your late fifties.
That'd be nice.
Where you own your home straight out, uh, well, assuming you bought your property, you have a thirty-year mortgage.
Right, right, yeah.
You're, you're losing, uh, a tremendous amount of, of so-called equity that you may have been counting on. And that's, that's my next question. In terms of disposable income, you talked about, you know, vacation homes, all those other things. If that's cut by thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, whatever that may be potentially, does that have an impact in the sales tax? Because now you're spending, uh, at least, um, from a, a mental standpoint, uh, you, what you thought you had, you don't have anymore. And nothing's changed other than, uh, the market is, is, I don't wanna say corrected itself, but it's, it's gone through what you've described here.
Right, and it, and it, it really is actually, I don't wanna say worse, but you, you don't have any need to spend or as much need to spend because your kids are, you know, are finally gone.
Right.
They're out of the nest. And so, uh, you, you, you know, you've had three garage sales and you just don't need any more stuff. And, um.
But doesn't it also mean you're probably not gonna go out and buy that expensive car if you're, if, uh, the value of your home is, as, you've lost thirty-five percent of the value of your home?
Well, that won't help. Yeah, that just, just won't help.
And that's what I think, you know, from our perspective, this is why this is very helpful is, is, you know, and that's why we talk to the city manager. We need to start figuring out where we're gonna be in the next twenty years.
Yeah, well, you know, the great thing about, uh, the community is that you do attract, uh, you know, these great power family formation years. I mean, you've got the forty-year-old wants to be here.
Right.
So under regardless of economic conditions, you've got that desire. I mean, that's, you can't ask for better than that.
Now, has property values, if they, if they do correct themselves or decline, then does that change the demographic for people who can afford and it won't be their second home anymore? It, it may actually go back to, uh, being the first home. For many of us that moved in the community, it was actually cheaper to move to Thousand Oaks than, for example, I was raised in the San Fernando Valley. And housing out here in the early eighties was cheaper than the San Fernando Valley. Not even close to that now.
Right, yeah, that's, that'll, that'll be interesting to see because, you know, population here has, has grown rapidly, uh, here since, you know, your first home. So it's doubtful that you're gonna have this major exodus out of the area and you're gonna have these different dynamics where it's cheaper here than the area that is, you know, San Fernando Valley. This is now very expensive because it's so desirable. Because it's, it's doubtful that, like, like what we've seen before is that you're gonna move to make room for that person that maybe wants to come in here for a lesser home value because everything else has dropped. So, you know, you'll still have, um, as they say in the industry, a good bid for properties because, um, you know, again, you're, you're gonna have a tight supply here. So I think that will always be, that's gotta be worth something.
Right, then I guess my final question is, and maybe Candace was gonna talk a little bit about this. What's our next step? I think this is helpful information, but in terms of a strategic financial plan, what would be our next step relative to how do we use this information?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I've, I've given that a lot of thought. And, uh, you, you know, take these trends and maybe with, with Candace, I can come up, we can come up with some type of a band, if you will, a range. And it has to be a pretty wide range of where these projected, uh, sales tax numbers can be based on this information. You know, as a country, again, we, we haven't had this kind of severe demographic shift ever happen here. So, well, we don't know until we're in it. Um, so if it is like Japan where they weren't down five percent for spending, but they went from two to minus one, back to zero, down to two, up one, down three, and they were just in and out of this, this, you know, slow painful in and out recessions, then maybe we could look at some bands there where you're, you're down one percent, up two, down five. And, you know, it's like everything. We, we cannot draw a straight line, so we'd have to put some kind of a, a channel. But the, you know, the channel will be, you know, not this way, it's gonna be this way to this way.
Right.
So maybe that could be of some, some use.
Right, appreciate it very good.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have, oh, Bill Delapina?
Just as a quick follow-up. Good evening. Um, the, you project that by two thousand and twenty, we should be over the, the hump basically and have gone through the, the worst of economic conditions, however bad they may be, about two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, that's when, that's when the cycle will complete herself because our kids that were peaked in nineteen ninety, they're in their big spending years.
Now, our strategic plan is a ten-year plan, correct? And we are two years into it? So it's about eight years left or?
We try to make it an evolving, rolling forward five years. And we went ahead and did ten years last time and we'll be updating it, but I think you're right. We just, we're trying to take the data we've got now and try to incorporate that in a plan looking out five years. With, with a ten-year horizon too, but it was, it's really hard to go past a five-year horizon. We've been talking to our economists about that, and that's kind of the initial, when we have economists from CLU and UC Santa Barbara come, they're looking at a five-year window. So, um, I think it's, Doug's trying to point out, we've got this, this rolling number that we gotta keep looking at going forward and.
Yeah, it's, it's just gonna be challenging, uh, period. It's, it really, the way I look at it, it's just not a, not a period now where you'd like to leverage things because possibly it is deflationary. I mean, we, we've built up, uh, a lot of things, uh, on leverage. And, um, you know, I, I didn't even discuss here what happens when the, the baby boom generation, which is attempting to retire, maybe either doesn't wanna retire or maybe can't. At the same time, uh, their kids are coming into the workforce. So there's actually, uh, you know, since we're, uh, seventy percent of our cost for producing something here as a service-based economy is through, um, salary or, you know, I'm talking about is we don't manufacture anything here, that you're gonna have a lot of workers, a lot of available workers and with less demand for the products that they sell. Now, certain services will do well, if you just think about the aging, uh, certain things that we'll like to do. And that's, that could be a consideration for the community. Um, you know, obviously, medical services will be important. Uh, leisure activities, great restaurants, uh, uh, you know, things that, that generation wants to spend money on. It just, it just won't be the, um, uh, buying the, the minivan and, uh, putting the kids through the school and all the school clothes and all the things and new appliances and those things that we put, we, we had to buy to, to start our families and to grow. And it's basically, you had to borrow money to do those things, which you created money. But now we're on the other side, which is usually people pay down debt or attempt to, and they don't wanna leverage. So that's where you get into a situation where, you know, it, it could turn into more of a deflationary problem than maybe just that series of recessions I talked about.
Thank you. Your information has been very insightful and extremely helpful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hong, did you have something to say? No? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd move that, uh, we receive and file the report and provide, uh, staff, um, to, uh, incorporate, um, this report into, uh, the recommendations they make for council, uh, moving forward with a strategic financial plan.
Okay, vote please.
Motion carries five zero.
We are back to the, uh, being with our regular agenda. So I, I apologize to the people from the Civic Alliance. You guys are here three hours longer than you would have been otherwise. But we do have a special presentation. We are on item five. And, um, I'm gonna come up for that. I would like to begin our special presentation portion of the City Council this evening by introducing Dow Dawn, a Ventura County Civic Alliance Executive Committee member, and Rebecca Evans. Are you gonna be speaking also? Okay. And Rebecca Evans is the executive direction, uh, director of the Civic Alliance. And, um, you're, you are going to be giving the presentation. Mr. Dawn, the Ventura County Civic Alliance is a nonprofit organization that works to promote a healthy, sustainable future in the Ventura County region. We are proud to have Dow and Rebecca here tonight to give us a review of the Civic Alliance's two thousand and We are proud to have Dow and Rebecca here tonight to give us a review of the Civic Alliance's 2007 State of the Region Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. First of all, it's only January 8th, so it's still early enough to say Happy New Year to you all. And perhaps most of all, I want to wish you a great health for 2008. My name is Dow Dawn, I'm a member of the Ventura County Civic Alliance, and also a member of the executive board, as well as a member of the subgroup of the alliance called Deliverable Community Groups, which focuses on, more on specific land use issues. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and present to you the 2007 Ventura County Civic Alliance Report of the State of the Region Report. With me is Rebecca Evans, and she's our executive director. We're very proud of this report, because this is one of the highlight achievement of the Civic Alliance last year. And this is an update of the prior one issue in 2002. And the information was researched and compiled by a team of researcher at Cal Lutheran University. It was led by Dr. Charles Maxi, who was here a bit earlier, and he's the dean of the business school. So I will show you the PowerPoint right away. If you flip to, I believe that you have been given a copy of the report. If you flip to the back of the, the front cover, there'll be a list of the names of the people who sponsored us, who supported the alliance. So I just want to very quickly read the names to thank them and honor them. The first one is the Workforce Investment Board, who is the title sponsor. And the other ones are First Five Ventura County, Cal Lutheran, Gene Haas, United Way, Metropolitan Water District, Proton Gamble, Cal State Channel Island, Scan Health Plan, and San Barbara Bank and Trust. Now, who are we and what is the Civic Alliance? Very briefly, this is a nonprofit organization. That was an initiative of the Ventura County Community Foundation Forum to help look at regional issues pertaining to the county. And our mission is to promote a healthy and sustainable future for the county. Now, we are the only organization that I know of that endures, that endeavors to bring together people from the entire region. And we serve as a forum for regional dialogue, we are the neutral convener of community issues, and we strongly champion the balancing of the three Es of sustainable community. Now, what are those three Es? They are the economy, environment, and social equity. In a truly sustainable community, those three key elements are closely interlinked, each promoting and supporting the others, and none will gain benefits at the expense of the other two. How are the three E currently reflected in our county? So let's take a quick look at some of the reports, information and charts. And I apologize for showing you more charts again after the presentation of the prior consultant. I hope that this won't be too boring. But the first slide is about the state of our agriculture. As we all know, agriculture is one of the county's main, very, very vital to our economy, is one of the main business. And yet, this chart shows that earning of farm workers decreased from $20,000 or so in 1998, down to $18,000 in 2006. And this, this is, this information is adjusted for inflation. A quick look at this next chart shows that there is an increase in those who identify themselves as politically independent from 1996 to 2006, so there's an increase of about 8%. On this next slide, you can see that although Ventura County roots are in agriculture, it is now, you know, although still significant, but a small part of the overall economy. On the left-hand side, right here, you can see where the agriculture chart stands in comparison to the rest of the chart. And what is really interesting to note is that under other services is where you have a lot of pool of labor, and yet the income level is quite low. So it is an indication that there's a large sector of people in the service that are not making high income. Now, regarding our education, you can see that the proportion of students in Ventura seeking to go into four-year college is lower than our neighboring counties. In fact, if you flip to page 27 of the report, there will also be a ranking of the schools and school district across the county. This next slide clearly illustrates one of the key challenges in our region. This is really interesting, coming right behind the prior presentation. You can see that the median income showed a really modest increase, and yet the affordability line really show that there's a deep plunge going from 2001 to 2005. And it is just only starting to look less abysmal from 2006 on. Of course, that is due to, as we all know, to the recent decrease in the housing price. Now, how are we doing on our natural resources? There's a little bit of good news here. Everything we use and consume, or even create, comes from raw materials from the earth. So the state of our planet's health depends on how our long-term care of our environment is being looked at, on how sustainable we live our lives. So you can see right here, this chart shows the increase in solar energy systems in the county. There's a, over the year, there's a slight increase. Now, certainly this is not enough, but, you know, this is somewhat optimistic. In terms of public health, again, this is good news for the county, the teenage pregnancy rates declined from 2002 to 2004. And yet, according to the data that was collected, there's still about 150,000 people that lack insurance. Speaking of public health, again, this is the rate of obesity in the county. It's been increasing steadily this past many years, and it has almost doubled since the last report, which was five years ago. We have to, we have to wonder how we develop our communities, our suburbs, or how they might have an impact on this. In terms of transportation, if, looking at this chart, we can see that there's a short increase in traffic congestion and delay, and they all translate into actual costs. Not only the congestion can drive people crazy, but there's an actual dollar cost associated with that. And as you can see, the figures show that in 2003, the cost actually came up to like $500 to $600 per person hours. And so that is the end of my presentation. I understand that the time was limited, and I tried to make it fast without rushing it through. If you have any question, either myself or Rebecca will be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dawn. This, boy, there is a lot of interesting information in here, really appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you, good evening. Thank you very much for this extremely interesting document. How long did it take to actually put the information together, all the data?
Well, after the first issue that came out in 2002, the team, from what I understand, immediately started to collect the data, to produce this document. So it took close to four years to come up with this report.
Yet some of the latest numbers are of 2006.
Yes, yes, they're very current. In fact, it was published in April of this year. And we already had a few presentations around the county to talk about this report.
This is excellent information that every city government should have, all of the colleges, universities. This is extremely helpful. Is it available at all in the local library, or anything like that, in local libraries? It is, great.
Yes, we had something like 5,000 copies, and we have been going around the county to distribute them to numerous organizations, other cities as well.
Schools, teachers, libraries, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Gillett?
Thank you again for coming down this evening, giving us this presentation. Several years ago, when the concept of the Civic Alliance was introduced, I was serving on the Economic Development Council when this first came in, right next door to the Community Foundation when the announcement was made. I asked the question then, and I see of the participants in this, there is, the alliance made a decision not to involve anyone in government as a government person, as an elected official or what have you, and there was a reason for that at that time. And yet now, when I look at the 12 major categories, from agriculture to transportation, every one of these is so intricately involved and wound around public agencies and their ability, the presentation we just had, to sustain and have the funds to do all of these things. In your work, how do you, how do you balance those two issues? Keeping people at whole elected office and are responsible for finding the funds to make a lot of this happen, and the data and its needs? How do those things work together?
Well, I'm really glad that you asked that question, because what I was going to bring up is the fact that we just went through a strategic restructuring of the membership. And we are now allowing elected officials to become members, even though they are not on the executive board of the organization, but they can be members. And we hope that in the future, we can engage public officials in the discussion of those important issues, so that would help all of you, you know, make, create policies that will address those type of issues. What we'll also do is, we try, to the extent possible, engage both elected and appointed officials through a series of either workshops or meetings, presentations, so that we can, we can discuss and, you know, in detail, all those type of issues, to help you and perhaps support you in your decision-making process.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because so much of the responsibility for creating the environment to address these issues sits in city halls or the county government center with the 11 primary public agencies, you know, the multitude of special districts and all the other things, that I could never understand, it was fine to list the primaries, identify the needs. But when you start developing strategies and creating environments to address these and respond to them without participation of government, I just didn't understand how that could work. And so I'm glad to see there's been some rethinking of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to the, to item 7, the City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Are there any council questions? Councilmember Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
And you would have to say except for item 7C.
Except for 7C, thank you.
Vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 8A, Public Hearings. Okay, well, the, city clerk, please open the public hearing for the water rate adjustment, wholesale water cost pass-through.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8A, a water rate adjustment, wholesale water cost pass-through. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. We have one speaker who has presented a card in pursuit to council standards. That speaker is allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Mr. Watkins will be providing the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Erwin, members of the city council. With me here on the staff dais, city engineer Jay Spurgeon, who plays a big role in helping to establish proposed water and wastewater rates. Also Nancy Arieta. Nancy, you recognized from previously being responsible for environmental programs, was here a couple weeks ago for all the environmental enhancement grants, and has made herself very popular in the community through that program. She's recently been promoted to senior analyst, and is now playing a very large role in the Public Works Department budgeting, and will be playing a very large role in the future in rate setting. So I wanted you to start to associate Nancy with this process, in addition to the previous things that she had done. Just to refresh council's memory, the quick background on this. The Water Financial Plan was approved by council in July of 2007, with new rates being adopted in September of last year. Subsequent to the Water Financial Plan being done, we were notified by the Cuyahoga Water District, who is the wholesaler in our area, that we would be seeing additional increases as of this July 1st. I'm sorry, this January 1st of 2008. Because of that, we asked council to go ahead and do an addendum to the financial plan and set this public hearing date to consider additional increases to cover those pass-through rates. As part of the Prop 218 process, customers were all advised of this in writing through the mail, that majority protest could be made. As of this evening, we've received a total of 13 protests, one tonight, and 12 previously by mail. Clearly, those 13 protests fall well below the threshold, which is in the 8,000 range of our 16,000 customers. I don't want to downplay that, though, because the rate increase that's coming is coming on the heels of a similar rate increase that we did this past July. And we're not pleased by having to do those increases, but I will go through the logic behind those and with the recommendation. The water master plan that was approved by council last summer assumed a 5% increase in wholesale water rates this January. We were notified after that that the actual increase would be 10%. We contracted with Bartle Wells and Associates to perform an addendum to the financial plan to look at what the impacts would be. The summary of that third-party review by that accounting firm was that the city did need to go ahead and do an interim increase and pass through the wholesale water rates. The increase proposed is to the O&M water rate portion of our rates only, not to the base rate charge, not to the capital, but only to the water rate portion. And in that way, it is truly just a pass-through of the cost that the city will be seeing. By doing the cost now, it's also important to note that we will be avoiding a larger increase later. If we were to wait, then the increase would not only have to cover those, but make up for the losses. The city reserves at this point, the reserve, recommended reserves are in the 17% to 25% range. That would represent two to three months of expenses. It's important to have reserves, those are our operating funds. There are fluctuations throughout the year due to billing cycles, due to the rainfall, how much water gets sold at different times, and it's always important to have some cash on hand within any fund in case of emergencies. We're currently running right about 11%, so we're on the shy end of reserves. If we were to proceed without this pass-through, we would chew through about another million dollars and bring our reserves down to approximately 6%. dollars and bring our reserves down to approximately 6% by this July of 2008. If we were to go the full 18 months before the next budget took place, when we would normally do water rates, we would almost completely delete those, deplete those reserves. We'd be down in the approximately 1% range with about $140,000 in reserves. Currently, we've got about 1.6 million in reserves. With the proposed rates shown here, the reserves actually go down slightly the first year to about 10% and then rebound slightly back up to near where they are at about 1.6 million again. Just a brief history, and I know we've run through this with council before, but historically, water rates have tracked well below the rate of inflation. We saw very, very low water rate increases through the 1990s, very moderate increases in the early part of this decade. Those increases this year have been much higher. And looking forward, we anticipate those increases, based on what we're hearing from Cuyagus and Metropolitan, to continue to outpace inflation. The water rate, the actual water rates, as we've calculated them for this additional, would result in a 3.5% increase immediately. So those would be the rates that we would ask the council to take into effect. That would change the quantity rate only from $2.16 per HCF to $2.25 per HCF now. And then they would go up an additional amount to $2.49 this July. So that's a 3.5% increase that we're suggesting at this point, and then an additional 2.5% increase in July. The total increase in July would then be about 10% because previously council had approved a 7.5% increase. And then that rate would then hold steady for that following year. So that rate from July '08 all the way through June of '09 would be fixed. As a reminder, again, this is a water rate map of the city. The city is the water purveyor for roughly the central portion of the city. On the west side of the city is the California American Water Company. And then on the east side is the California Water Service Company. You should note that in the middle of that blue portion, which is the city's portion, there is no longer an island. As of January 1st, we are the water purveyors for the Cano Oaks area. So there used to be kind of an island there. And at this point, that swap has been completed. So Cal-Am is the water purveyor for the SDA portion where the city was previously designated purveyor. We are now the purveyors for the Cano Oaks area. Doing the water comparison with the two private water companies, we do still remain the cheapest water purveyor in town. So we are still less than the two privates. The privates are also planning on passing through the increase that took effect this January 1st. And so we're roughly 12% and 11% less than the two private purveyors now through this July. The proposed for July shows that rate going down, only because we show our increases. We don't know what other increases they are going to have out there. So it's, for this first go-around, it's more of an apples and apples. As we project out, we're not sure what their rates are going to be. We do know that both of the private purveyors are looking at implementing tiered rates. And so that will change those comparisons around and as their rate structure changes. It's also important to note that the balloting that went out basically was trying, was balloting for existing, the existing city ordinance. The existing ordinance that's been on the records here in the city for some period of time allows the city to do a straight pass-through of both wholesale water costs and energy costs. And so this Prop 218 balloting just validated that city ordinance. So with that, just two final comments. One in regards to conservation. There is a lot going on in the conservation end. On the good news side is that the Public Works Rain Dance from last week paid off. And we've got a fair amount of rain coming through this past weekend, coming, some more coming. That's been some good news. The snow pack up in the Sierra Nevadas is back up to average or slightly ahead of average for this time of year. And that's good news. We are gearing up on the conservation. We've got billing inserts going out. We're doing bus placards. The city's website's been changed. You can go on the website now through the e-Gov and you can look at your water usage. So you can look up to three years of your water usage. We've been meeting with Cuyagus, other agencies. We've got metal frames that are reminding folks to save water. Those go in all the city-owned restrooms. If you've been to the Oaks Mall recently, you'll notice a big, in the food court, they've got a wall-sized mural reminding folks to save water. And so there's a lot of effort now, kind of reinstituting that mentality that's been out there for some period of time on the conservation end, and you'll see more of that ongoing. And then the second item's in regards to tiered rates. We brought the water rates to council several months ago. That was one of the questions council had. And we have begun the investigation to look at the city going to tiered rates. We're looking at what all the other agencies do, how they've structured their rates. We're looking at the Prop 218 implications of tiered rates and doing that analysis. So we're going forward with that. And we will have a recommendation to come back to council at some point. It is a volatile time within the rates, and so introducing tiered rates at this point may not be the best time, just because of some of the other rate changes going on. But we're going to go through that process, have something structured so that we can make a recommendation to council when it's appropriate. And so with that, we would move the staff recommendation, and we're more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Does the council have any questions? Mr. Gillett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watkins, I read with interest the 13 protest letters, and now we have one more, 14 total. While the number is relatively small, I guess my question is, and I didn't see anything in there, do we make an attempt, or do we have, have we given you the resources to make an attempt, that even with a small number of letters like this, that we have someone go through them and specifically pull out the questions and the accusations and the things so that we know what's going on and the thought process of the people that are concerned about this? Do we have, do we have the time and the resources to do that? And my reason for asking that, well, let me, please respond to that first.
The answer is yes. And I'll respond for the last go-around. This go-around, we haven't gone through, we were waiting for all of them to come in. On the last go-around, what we did is we went through and summarized. And a number of them both protested the increased rates and made recommendations, which I think is what you're referring to. Some made recommendations. Last time, there was a number that wanted to see a senior rate or some sort of a discounted rate for low-income or elderly. There was a number of recommendations in regards to tiered water rates so that those who conserved water were rewarded. There are some other recommendations. I can't recall what they all were. But we did go through and try to generalize those and then look at what our existing practices are to determine what we could do.
Okay, is there some attempt on a feedback loop then to the people that raised those questions to tell them that these are things that are, at least in discussion so that...
Yeah, I don't think, Mr. Spurgeon, we did respond to some, and with some, there was follow-up phone conversations. We did not respond by letter to every one of them that came in. And the reason is they come in kind of as a ballot, per se. Some were phrased more of a letter and some were more just a ballot-style opposition. So they didn't all get a written response.
Well, because there are some of them in there that, as an example, the one individual that had, when he was developing his property, wanted to put a well in and accused that he was talked out of it. And had he put the water in, had he put the well in, he would have had adequate water to irrigate or do whatever he wanted to do on a large parcel of property, and now he's paying. It would be interesting on those to know how something like that, how it actually occurred and possibly work with him to find out, is there, is there a weakness in the system where something like that did happen? Or was there more to it? I mean, our experience has usually shown us there's more to something like that than can be included in just a brief complaint. I'm particularly struck by the thought that the percentages, we continue to use the percentages when the actual amounts are relatively small, very small. But government seems to have a process by which the percentage is all important. And when you put the percentage up against the actual increase, the increase is miniscule in nature and is justified by, or perhaps it wouldn't be. But I think we could get a better feeling if we, average cost per home, or those types of things, over a period of time, so that that's included in the message. And it gives us more information to work with when we're responding to people. Water rates and sewer rates are particularly sensitive issues. We have just recently completed our study of fire service, and we find that we have annually $6 million more going out of the city than we have coming in for fire service, and not a whimper. Not, no editorial cry, no accumulation of concerned residents. $6 million in tax money that's going out, that's being spent to help provide a service to other areas of Ventura County outside the city, coming out of the taxpayers' pockets in this city. I'll never quite understand that, but maybe if we continue to try and talk to some of our residents on things like this, maybe it'll help us all get a better understanding of what buttons are most significant to our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Watkins, for those jurisdictions that have tiered rates, can you imagine a situation where a tier would change definition, i.e. the low tier would change from a number to a lower number to further encourage conservation?
There's, and our city attorney might want to comment. One of the issues that's of hot debate amongst some of the attorneys right now is whether or not you can do that with tiered rates. Because what Prop 218 tells you is that you've got to charge no more than the amount it costs you to provide the service. And so we've got the ability, preliminarily looking at, we've got the ability to do some level of tiered rates because we do pay a tiered rate to Cuyagus. I think roughly 85, 90% of our water comes in tier one, the base tier, and only a very small amount do we pay the higher tier. So we would have the ability to then reflect that in our rates. There's a lot of debate and a lot of discussion amongst agencies who have historically had tiered rates as to whether those rates currently comply with Prop 218. It's the same thing that prevents us from doing senior discounted rates or low-income discounted rates because you're purposely charging somebody more than it costs to deliver that service to the benefit of somebody else, and that kind of goes afoul of Prop 218.
Thank you. Well, it seems like if we can't manufacture additional water supplies, which apparently is going to be very difficult to do, unless we go into something like the Orange County Project at a cost of down there $490 million.
Which we would be happy to do, by the way. It'd make a Public Works person happy to take on a project of that size.
I'm sure you would. But we do need to then increase our conservation efforts. And while I mention conservation, I would like to take this opportunity, if I may, Madam Mayor, and suggest that in light of all the rain that we've received this past weekend, that those of us who have sprinkler systems might take a look at them and maybe turn them off for a day or two. That'd be a very small drop in the bucket, if you would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. In looking at the dozen-plus letters that we have received, many of them are from seniors. One assumes perhaps fixed income, perhaps not. One asks the question, why we cannot purchase water from other purveyors? And is, another letter suggests, is all of that money going to administrative services, for example, salaries and benefits?
Well, the increase that's going through right now, we put through purely on the quantity rate. So the increase that council is considering tonight is 100% pass-through, the cost that we pay for water, to our customers. So it's purely an increase on the quantity rate. And that's all that's being passed through tonight. So there's no capital, there's no anything else going along with that. It's just purely going along on the quantity rate as an increase in our costs. And remember, our costs, you know, the cost that we pay for water is roughly 60% to 2/3 of our budget. So, you know, the majority of our budget, we're just buying water at this cost and then passing that cost right through. And then the other third is our operations costs for, you know, building capital, electrical costs to pump the water up, you know, maintenance of fire hydrants, all that type of thing. But by far, the majority is just pure water cost. And so that's why it's not something we're able to absorb. And I'd remind council also, we did absorb it last year. So last January, an increase came through. We hadn't anticipated. We did have reserves. We drew those reserves down. In hindsight, that might not have been such a good idea.
In order to, in order to reduce the cost that is passed on to the consumer, is it possible to look at various programs or any ways where perhaps we could make cuts in order to lessen or ease the pain?
Make cuts? All we're passing through is the cost of water. So I'm not sure.
No, no, I mean overall, in the overall bill that a resident receives.
I guess what I would suggest, when council reviewed the financial plan this past July, one of the things that was done at that point, you know, earlier, I mean, just a few months before that, council had approved the capital plan. After that capital plan was done, and we went through the financing of it with the water plan, we actually came back with a revised capital plan. And so we did, we moved a lot of capital projects out. There was capital projects that are now being deferred. The Water Division, the Public Works Department as a whole, for that matter, hasn't added any new employees in 12, 15 years. And so, you know, if you look at, we've got more pipes, more square footage. It's been a situation where we haven't added anybody. There's the same amount of employees that we've had all the way through. So there's been no additions. And so I think, you know, at this point, the operation is kind of where it is. I don't know that there's any place we could say, you know, make a cut and then have that reflect. You've got to make an awful lot of big cuts within that small 1/3% to make up for much of a decrease in the water bill. Because like I said, the majority of it's just a pass-through cost.
Well, given the financial outlook, it may be necessary, who knows, to actually make mandatory cuts across the board. I mean, who knows? It may not be necessary. Let's hope it's not. I was simply wondering, because of what you stated, the tier and whatnot, when will we actually get a report on that? You say, right now, it's in the works, but you will get back to council whenever it's feasible. Can you give us a clearer timetable as to when we would receive that sort of information?
Yeah, and I'll tell you, the other thing we've been waiting for, quite candidly, is for the two private water purveyors to implement their tiered rates. One of the things that happens when you implement tiered rates is by the very nature of tiered rates, you're going to be raising the rates on a lot of people. And that doesn't usually make you very popular. So we've been kind of waiting to let the privates go first because they stepped out and they were willing to do it. We were going to let them go first and see how effective they were and then try to learn from their experience. And so quite candidly, we've been waiting for them to go before us.
The city of Long Beach, not too long ago, actually implemented mandatory conservation. Are we, how far away are we from actually implementing that, if at all?
At this point, I couldn't.
Not at all?
Not, yeah. What we do, you know, all our water comes through Cuyagus. So we meet with Cuyagus regularly. We met with them the middle of this past month with all the other water purveyors. We went through the, kind of the state of the water industry, where we are, where we think we're going to be for this year. And we continue to do that. And so, you know, we're kind of crossing our fingers that this turns out to be more of a normal water year. And it'll really be kind of at the end of this rainfall season that we end up looking back and trying to determine, then looking forward, where we think we're going to be for next year. So I don't see mandatory cuts coming where we've got to manage. I think it's going to continue to be a voluntary conservation program. You're going to continue to see rebates for low-water use toilets, for low-water use and high-efficiency dishwashers and wash machines. We're going to probably be doing more education on outdoor water use. Like Dr. Glancy said, you know, getting that message out that, hey, it rained, turn your sprinklers off. Probably see rebates, or you may see more education on drip irrigation systems. The city's done a lot of that already. We've got some smart irrigation controllers out there that are actually controlled by satellite. And so it actually looks at, you know, they automatically turn it off when it rains. But even during the summertime, it looks at the index between humidity and temperature and determines really the optimum amount of water for a given area and microclimate. So I think that's what we're going to be seeing a lot more of in the future.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to be having public testimony right now. And if the public has any additional written protest, please present them to the city clerk. Our first speaker, first and only speaker is Michael Adams.
Hi, I'm Michael Adams from Newberry Park. And thank you for having me speak this evening. First off, I want to say is, you know, we had a slide up here saying how great our water rates are, but personally, I don't think it's anything to be particularly proud of. The city of Santa Ana has water rates that are half of what ours are. And maybe we ought to be looking to see what they're doing to have such low water rates compared to what we have. Second of all, I want to ask, you know, how high are the wholesale costs going to go before the city of Thousand Oaks protests the water wholesalers and saying, hey, what are you guys doing to us? You know, these rates just seem to be going up and up and up. Is the value, you know, we've accepted 5% and they said, oh gee, 5% went over well. Let's jack it up to 10. Is it going to be 20% or 30% or 50%? Where are we going to draw the line and say, that's enough? What are you guys doing with all this money? Now, I went on the CMWD's website, took a look at some of their financial, or a couple of financial statements for a couple of years. of financial statements for a couple of years, for two thousand and five and two thousand and six. During that period, we had a water rate increase of four-point-six percent, and their water revenues from us went up five-point-six percent. So some of that was from the water rate increase, some of it from just selling more water. But at the same time, their cost of water only went up two-and-a-half percent. So you can see, they're now making more profit on the same amount of water than they did before. Now, where is all this money going? Well, salaries and benefits during that period went up twelve percent. So, you know, you've got to start asking, where's our money really going? We can't just throw money at the water wholesalers and say, yeah, okay, here you go. And then there was some talk here about tiered rates. I mean, personally, for me, I see tiered rates as a license to gouge the consumer. Example, I'm a single person, I don't have my heat on, I don't use my gas stove, I use a gas, I'm sorry, I don't use my gas oven, I just have a gas stove. I cannot meet the baseline for the tiered gas rate. So how is a family of four, say, supposed to meet these tiered rates? I think we should just stick with the flat rates. I think if we want to look at water conservation, we can do things like educate the public in terms of how they can save water, that there are devices out there that now can measure the amount of water in the soil and say, you're overwatering, you're underwatering, so that, you know, people are keeping their gardens looking nice with less water. Some cities now are looking at reclaiming water. Maybe we should be looking at reclaiming water. You know, we run the sewage plant, so I don't see any reason why we couldn't look at that. So anyway, you know, that's my basic point here is, you know, we've got to put some pressure or talk to these wholesalers and say, you know, what are you guys doing with the money? Some of the money is actually going into investments. And personally, I would rather have the money going to my own investments for retirement, not to the investment of a water district. So that's my basic point here, is I just think we need to take a deeper look at what's going on and try to get a handle on these water rates. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Is there any staff response?
I can say, we do work through the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. Cuyahoga is our representative to the metropolitan. The rates, I mean, I agree with them. The rates are high. They are higher than we had anticipated them and higher than we wished they were. They were proposed to be even higher, and it was through Cuyahoga and Don Kendall there and his say, and trying to hold some of those down. So initially, they had proposed a thirteen percent, they lowered it to ten. They had the proposal for next January. What we've got at this point is a promise that they're going to hold it to ten, but initially, it was going to be higher. We're hoping it might still be less than that. So we do try to keep an eye on the wholesalers. What they're telling us is that the majority of those increases are due to capital costs, and that because of the conservation, because of the constrained environment up in the Bay Delta, and there's curtailed water deliveries because of some of the environmental restraints up there, they're having to go out and buy water and obtain water in different places. They're having to start to invest pretty heavily in their infrastructure, where a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that was built was built with a fifty, sixty, seventy-year timeframe or time life, and it's now coming to time to replace a lot of things. And so, a lot of agencies are all seeing that at the same time, and so the capital costs are going up. They're having to make the same decisions that this board is having to make in regards to how much can you do and how much can you defer, because sometimes by deferring that maintenance, it ends up being more expensive in the long run. So they're kind of struggling with some of those same decisions that this council's having to struggle with. But that's what they're telling us that the costs are coming from.
All right, thank you. And we have one written statement card that says, "Residents should not have to pay an inordinate increase for water, and the city council should study methods to increase water conservation instead." Mr. Mitnick?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, some final comments here for the members of the public as well. This is a very difficult decision for the council. It's not unique to Thousand Oaks. And please keep in mind that the city has been very successful in keeping rates low and protesting, whether with the PUC, for the other water purveyors, and dealing with our water supplier. But we are merely, as a city, a distributor of water. We have one place to buy it, we purchase it, we are held at their mercy on the price, and then we distribute it. And we are always looking at ways to keep our rates as low as possible. As Mark explained, we have a very lean operation. We haven't added staff in many years. We have deferred maintenance. I'm very concerned about the long-term effects of the deferring of maintenance and deferring of capital, because that will cost the ratepayers more later than if we were to do it now, so please keep that in mind. We do provide an outstanding service at a good price. In the water rate comparison, we are still cheaper than the two IOUs, investor-owned utilities, in Thousand Oaks. Keep in mind, those rates will go up very soon. And also, council, I just want to remind you that your past leadership and efforts to protest in front of the PUC, Cal-Am and Cal-Water's previous water rate attempts, increased attempts, and the merger on Cal-Am's side with the foreign utilities, has had a very positive and lasting impact. So those ratepayers in Thousand Oaks pay much less today than they would have without this council's involvement. So thank you for your indulgence on that.
All right, prior to closing the public hearing, there's one last call for written Once the public hearing is closed, no written protest will be accepted. And the public hearing is now closed. Will the city clerk please provide the results of the tabulation?
The results are as follows. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed water rate increase was sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five. The total number of valid protests received were thirteen, which includes the one protest received this evening, which is pending verification. And therefore, this is less than a majority protest, and based on the results, there are insufficient protests received, and a motion is in order to approve the staff recommendation.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Bill Delapena?
I have a question. I would like to ask, what happened? What would we do as a city if we were to receive?
I think that if we close the public hearing, I think if you're going to ask staff questions, we have to reopen the public.
Maybe the city manager can answer it then. What would we do if we received letters that were majority protest letters? What would the city then do?
Majority protest? Then you wouldn't be able to increase the rates.
Okay, and then what?
We would have to look at general fund subsidy or come up with alternatives and meet with Cuyahoga and explore options.
Why can we not meet with Cuyahoga now?
We have been, in effect, as Mark explained, we've already done that. We've conveyed our concerns, so.
Can we continue to do that, whatever protests? We need to continue to do that.
We have a professional relationship with them, and it's worked very well, and we can continue to do that. And we're also in the same boat with Cal-Water and Cal-Am. We all buy water from the same source, so we can continue to do that.
Because I thought some of the recommendations made by Mr. Adams were actually quite good.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think that considering the supply of water, considering the constraints of the water available to Southern California because of restriction and flow up north, and the increasing population, I don't see water rates really going down. I see water rates only going up, honestly. And that's just for the raw material. When you consider also increased costs that are probably facing us from various regulatory actions, regulatory agency actions, then the rates are going to go even higher for some of our utilities, much higher than what we have right now. I think it's extremely fiscally irresponsible to decrease our water fund lower than it is now. And if we subsidize these rate increases, that's certainly what will happen. I therefore would, oh, let me make a comment too about something the speaker mentioned, and that was reclaimed water. The Orange County project that I mentioned to Mr. Watkins was a four-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar project that Orange County got into on treating affluent, and it is a, if you'll pardon the phrase, toilet-to-tap process. Their treating, the goal is to get seventy million, the present goal, to get seventy million gallons of very, very pure water available, and when the plant is completely completed, it'll go up to a hundred-and-thirty million gallons. And that's rather tremendous. Another side benefit of that is, there's two-hundred-and-forty-million-gallons-less outflow. So that's what some communities are doing about coming up with additional water. I don't know if we'll ever get there, but it's certainly something that's, that is being done. So, that being said, it would be, I'd like to move that we, the proposed ordinance be read in title, only further read and be waived, and if no objection introduced, applied.
Do we have any comments to the motion? Vote, please.
This is an ordinance adjusting and setting fees and restating rates of the city water division, and the motion carries five-zero.
Okay, we are on to our second department report. Item nine B, the land use right to vote on traffic congestion initiative, petition certification. Ms. Lawrence will be doing the staff presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. On October fifteenth, two thousand and seven, a notice of intent to circulate a petition and the proposed initiative measure titled Right to Vote on Traffic Congestion Initiative was filed with the city clerk department. The ballot title and summary was prepared by the city attorney and provided to the proponents, followed by publishing of the notice of intent and circulation of the petition. The petition was filed with the city clerk department on December tenth, two thousand and seven. City clerk staff performed a raw count of the petition sections and signatures, and the proponents were provided a receipt for two thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-seven estimated number of sections and fifteen thousand three-hundred-and-eighty-four estimated number of signatures. The petitions were delivered to the Ventura County Elections Division to perform a random sampling examination of the signatures pursuant to Elections Code Section nine-one-one-five. Election Code Section nine-one-one-five allows random sampling verification of signatures for petitions showing more than five hundred signatures. The county provided a signature verification certificate, which is attachment three to the staff report. Three hundred and eighty-one out of the five hundred random sampling were found to be valid, computing to a seventy-six-point-two percentage. Seventy-six-point-two times the raw count of fifteen-three-eighty-four signatures equals eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-three valid signatures. Eleven thousand seven twenty-three meets and exceeds fifteen percent of the number of signatures required to qualify for a special election. On December eighteenth, two thousand and seven, council directed staff to prepare an impact analysis report. Pursuant to Elections Code ninety-two-twelve, this report shall be presented to the council no later than thirty days after the elections official certifies to the city council the sufficiency of the petition. A special meeting of the city council has been scheduled for February fifth, two thousand and eight, in order for city council to receive the impact analysis report and either adopt the ordinance without alteration or immediately order a special election, which the ordinance without alteration will be submitted to a vote of the voters of the city. Staff is requesting approval of the recommendations outlined in your staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. We received a letter in tonight's supplemental packet from a law firm in L.A. regarding this particular item, and it actually disagrees with some of the scope of the work. And I'm watching the finance director, and I believe that Amy Albano will be answering that question then, regarding the scope of work and why this letter claims that the analysis by this firm is going to be biased.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public, we disagree with the letter. I don't know that there's much more to say. The city's staff's view is, it's attached, that we are asking for an independent, objective review of this measure, initiative measure. That's what the Elections Code calls for, and I think a perfect example of what I mean is on, if you look at the supplemental, it's page seventeen, page two of the letter, it says, "None of the impacts identified in Task Two would be caused by the right to vote on traffic congestion initiative." And the whole point of commissioning the study is, we're going to have an independent group that's consultant that we hired that will come back and say, does the initiative have any of these impacts? And the government code, I'm sorry, not government code, Election Code spells out what can be looked at, and that's really what's been incorporated into the scope of work. So this is one person's opinion. I think there's a lot of advocacy in their own letter in terms of what the initiative does and doesn't do. And our whole point, and the point of the council ordering the study, is to get an objective look at what the initiative impacts are, and it's very, very typical for these kind of studies exactly doing what we're, the city's proposing.
I don't think that this letter was actually, what this letter, in reading it, does, I need to correct myself, is it is questioning the scope of the work, not who is doing the work, but the scope of the work.
I didn't, sorry. My answer was to the scope of work, that we feel the scope of work is appropriate, and I use that one sentence as an example of them questioning that the initiative won't have any of those impacts, and that's exactly what we're asking the consultants to do, to come back. We're not telling the consultants what the answer is or anything else. They're going to look at this initiative, they've done this type of work all over the state, and they will come back with a report that the council can then view themselves and decide whether there's any credence to what their findings are or not. That's really, I think, the whole point of it. And as I say, this is one person's opinion of the scope of work.
The, yeah, the scope of work states that, for example, the scope of work does not include whether the initiative will actually be beneficial and to evaluate the traffic with this initiative?
I can respond. The opinions articulated in this letter will be shared with the consultant, and then the consultant can take this into consideration and make it part of the analysis. And that would be true of any letter or communication that came in. That simple.
Well, given that this is an important initiative, I do want to make sure that everyone's opinion is being included, including this particular letter which we have before us tonight, so that we truly have an unbiased opinion, and the scope of work is crucial in how the, what the end result will be of this impact study. So that is why I'm mentioning this for the record.
Okay, and we have two public speakers. Our first speaker is Chuck Cohen, and our second speaker will be Jerry Langer. All right, Mr. Cohen will not be speaking. Jerry Langer, are you going to be speaking?
Evening, thank you very much. Jerry Langer, Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to say, I wanted to put a personal face on quality of life issues. I understand a little bit about the background of collecting the signatures and the people behind it. I haven't had anything to do with that. I do drive in Thousand Oaks every day, and I have for the last ten years, down Westlake Boulevard in particular. I've noticed over the last year, instead of being able to go through, for instance, the intersection of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Westlake, which is arguably the worst intersection in the city, instead of getting through with one, waiting one light typically, about six months ago, I just realized it was, on average, two lights. And in the last couple of months, it's been as long as three lights. It's taken me ten minutes sometimes to get through that intersection. Coming back, same thing at Arbalis and Westlake Boulevard, despite taking all of the lanes, all three lanes, and making them turn lanes so people can go onto Arbalis from Westlake, it'll back up past Lang Ranch Parkway. I figure conservatively, I spend an extra ten minutes, ten, fifteen minutes a day in my commute, which doesn't sound like much, except that I figured out roughly, just sitting here over the evening, something like forty hours a week, forty hours a year extra in my commute. And that's just me, you know, having bought a hybrid car. You know, having bought a hybrid car is great, save a little bit of gas, but, you know, what good does it do to save gas if you wind up being on the road more? I'm sure that I'm typical in that regard. I think that this proposal to have people, citizens, have a say, a direct say, in projects, large projects, is commendable. It's in a democratic way. I highly support it. Another instance, I see my light went on. Uh, there's a major project scheduled to be put in right at the intersection of Westlake Boulevard and Arbalis, according to, uh, Lang Ranch Community Park, so-called by the park district. Uh, they wanna put in a humongous, uh, regional sports complex there on the landslide. The traffic study that has been completed shows that there will be serious mitigation needed, uh, as far as traffic goes, as well as other issues, which I won't go into right now. That is something people need to know about and need to have the ability to say, "Hey, we don't want this here." Mr. Fox said before regarding Dos Fiantos that the people who live there should have a, a greater say in what they want and what they don't want. I completely agree. In Lang Ranch, the people there, majority of the people don't want a humongous project that's going to add tremendous amount of traffic and pollution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langer. And then we also have four written statement cards, three that say the, uh, impact analysis scope is flawed, and one that is opposed to the initiative and says that it is bad public Ms. Bill Della Pena?
Thank you. Uh, in, in reading the scope of work that EPS, the company, is proposed to evaluate, infrastructure, city operating budget, local economy, business activity, public-private partnership, affordable housing, redevelopment, and cost of development approvals, I don't see anywhere where they should be also analyzing the environmental impact.
Do you have a comment, Ms. Albano?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I don't have the, um, Election Code right in front of me. I believe we actually set them out, though, in the earlier, um, in the staff report to you, but we try to mimic what is, what the, um, Election Code calls for in what you look at when you're doing an impact analysis. That's the whole purpose of doing it, and when we, um, the other thing I wanna explain is that when we talked, we're looking at baselines, and, thank you. We were trying to hit on the, um, the major sections, so, again, it's, um, the Election Code itself calls out the things that you look at, and that's really what we were trying to mimic in our scope of work. So the, um, quote-unquote, "environmental impact" is not part of the scope that's typically in this type of study, and, um, that was explained, at least from my perspective, what we did, though, at the last hearing when the council ordered it, was to go through the government code and say, "That's what we were going to be studying tonight." So, if the council believes that we've missed something under the, um, Election Code, which is Section nine two one two, we'd be more than happy to go back and make sure that we've hit all the sections that are typically studied, and I believe that we've already done that with all of our discussions with EPS, as well as in the, um, agreement, the simple letter agreement we did with them. But everything that is typically looked at, we have included.
Can I add to that? 'Cause that is, the, the December eighteenth staff report, which council approved five zero, that's in the packet, and in particular in pages sixty-five and sixty-six, the, the impacts to be analyzed per the state Elections Code that Amy was talking about, they're fully delineated here, and that was the council direction to adhere to that, and that's what we did in the scope of work.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Glancy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think no comment is really necessary, other than, uh, I move staff recommendations, uh, point one and two.
Any comments to the motion? Ms. Bill Della Pena?
I, I will support the motion, however, with the, um, little caveat that I think we could have included the environmental analysis as well, and what such a, an initiative would do to the quality of life in Thousand Oaks. And that's, that's lacking.
Mr. Gillette?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, uh, it's absolutely essential, uh, given the way this issue is shaping up, that we follow our attorney's recommendations to follow the applicable codes, both the Election Code, uh, and, and any other statutes that have governance in this particular issue, and not vary, because any variation, uh, is surely to bring additional criticism, additional discussion, which may be nothing more than red herring subterfuge to distort from the real mission here. We need to get to the heart of it, we need to follow the codes, we need to follow the letter of the law and be as, as careful as we possibly can to do it right. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I just, uh, maybe, I know we just voted, but I, I didn't wanna interrupt the vote. Is part of the analysis gonna include, uh, the available property where something greater than a hundred thousand square feet could be potentially built, I'm assuming?
Yes, that is part of what we're trying to get, that baseline information to the, to the consultant on the available property that could have something that large on it.
Right, 'cause as an example, Mr. Langer mentioned the intersection of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Westlake, that intersection, there's nothing left to be built there. So I'm just saying, I don't know how that would have any impact on that intersection. So I, I'm, I was assuming, just to make the record clear, that that would be part of the analysis, where, where these properties are located and, and how many there would Yeah, exactly.
All right, we are going to move on to Department Report nine C, the status of the Bicycle Advisory Team Recommendations, and, um, Mr. Watkins, are you gonna be presenting the report?
All right, we'll start it off. Thank you, Mayor Irwin, members of the council. Uh, this past July, the city council approved the, uh, BAT team recommendations. One of those recommendations was for the city to create a partial position for a bicycle coordinator, and, uh, that position was created. It's, um, uh, it's not a, not a full-time position, but Kathy Lowry, who's, uh, engineering associate with, uh, Public Works Engineering, uh, Traffic Division, uh, has graciously offered to take on that position, so now she dedicates a portion of her time to the Bicycle Advisory Team Recommendations. And so with that, I'm gonna have Kathy go ahead and do the status update this evening. Um, Kathy's had the job just for a few short months, uh, but has made some great strides within that time, and so we'll let her go through just that update for council here tonight.
Hi, good evening. Um, as you, um, may remember, last July, the council received the recommendations of the Bicycle Advisory Team and asked to have the recommendation status report brought back periodically. So as, um, my, one of my new duties, that's, my first duty, is actually to bring it back to you. In the last several months, the, um, city staff has sent out, uh, proposals to, for, uh, a contract to be developed for the Bicycle Safety Outreach and Education Program, and we received three proposals and selected PMC to do this, um, the scope of work, and the scope of work is included in your, um, council packet. Additional, um, duties that the Bicycle Safety Outreach and Education Program, um, team will do will also include, um, developing the city's website, um, brochures that are bilingual, new bicycle maps, and then, as part of Phase Two, they will also implement, go out to the schools, go out to the community, and really get the word out on how to ride safely in our community. As, um, part of my duties, I will continue to, to implement the Bicycle Master Plan. Um, there are currently several projects in the works, including moving forward with the Willow Lane Bike Way, which requires working closely with Caltrans. This is the, um, bike way that will connect the Transportation Center on Rancho Road to Willow Lane at the Spectrum Club. Another project that you'll hear more about next month is the Hillcrest Drive Bike Lane Improvement Project. This will stretch from Hillcrest Drive on the east end at Westlake Boulevard all the way to Camino Dos Rios Teller, Teller, and this will, um, as part of the Bicycle Master Plan, which, um, identified this need, it'll complete the east-west corridor in the city. The, part of the improvements includes signage and striping, as well as some, um, right-of-way improvements where we need to widen out the road to provide, um, adequate width for bike lanes. And another project that we're working very closely with is tomorrow's the kickoff meeting for the Kaneo Creek South Class One Bike Path, and that's the, um, bike path that will lead from Jan's Road through Kaneo Creek, Creek South, under the twenty-three, and then over to Gainesboro, and that'll also, um, complete an important link for the north-south corridor in the city. We're moving forward in, um, implementation of the pavement markings. There's two pavement markings that, um, we're targeting to start with first. One is the sharrows, which you may recall is putting pavement markings on Thousand Oaks Boulevard to help the commuters who currently use the sidewalk feel more safe riding their bicycles on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but also letting the drivers know that they should be on the Boulevard and where they should be riding on the Boulevard so they don't get doored by some cars. Um, we are ready to move forward with that, but we're waiting for PMC to come on board so they can develop a marketing education program in bilingual materials so that the riders understand the purpose of these markings before they're just out on the street. The other pavement marking are the, um, intersection indicators, which will help a bicyclist know where to sit at an intersection to help trip the lights. It'll, um, work with, with the loops in the pavements, um, show them where the loops in the pavements are so that the lights change or the cameras at the intersections. That concludes my presentation. Um, the staff recommendation is to accept the status report and also to approve the staff recommendations in Item seven C, which was moved to, um, this Item Two.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for the, uh, the update on, on what the BAT is doing. Uh, I have a question. Has there been any further work done on a path that goes from Santa Rosa Valley into TO to get cyclists off of, uh, the Norwegian grade?
Mr. Spurgeon can answer that.
Yes, happily. Um, we are working and have been working with that HOA and the developer of that recent track development down there off of Reed Road to obtain a, an easement for a Class One Bike Path over their emergency access paved road, uh, which, uh, I believe bicyclists, uh, in some, in some respects are already using that as a, uh, as an alternate route, but, um, in order for us to really include it in our, our materials, our outreach, our, our website, et cetera, we need to get that easement. And the next step is to get an appraisal of what the city, uh, would be a fair market value, make that offer to the HOA in order to obtain that easement. So we, we have been working with them and we'll continue to move forward.
Uh, thank you, and I, I would say that, uh, during the, the mayor's favorite, uh, project last year, Diabetes Run, we did use that path, and, uh, I was very thrilled to see that we didn't have to go up the grade. So, uh, that will be nice if it works out. I have a second question, that is, the, um, does PMC, PMC is, is said to have specific expertise in outreach. Uh, I assume that their efforts, areas of effort have been in locations similar to ours, where there's something of, uh, a language barrier, and there's something of a, a bit of a fear factor on the part of some of those with whom you were, were trying to communicate. Um, I know in discussing, earlier discussions of the BAT, getting to some of the service workers and getting them to understand we were really interested in their safety and just to, um, ride their bikes more legally, more carefully, so as they're less likely to be victims, was, was really very difficult. So, can we expect, uh, for PMC to indeed have, um, a fair level of specific expertise in this arena?
Um, yes, very much so. They, of the three proposals that were submitted, they were by far an outstanding, um, selection, choice for us to select. They only work with public agencies, they work on education and outreach, and they have a great deal of experience in, for example, Safe Route to Schools, which, um, is really getting to the parents and the children, um, and, uh, using, um, necessarily using bilingual materials, and possibly when people don't wanna be approached and going through different avenues to approach the public, not the traditional way. So they, um, they have a lot of experience, and they, um, they're very confident that they'll be able to deliver what they proposed.
Thank you very much.
I, I had a couple of questions. First, can you explain how, how is the Willow Lane, Willow Lane attachment to the, um, Transportation Center? Where does that bike path go?
It's primarily all within the Caltrans right-of-way. So if, so it's really, just for orientation, it's where the, the Transportation Center is, but it would go up from Rancho Road within the Caltrans right-of-way, along, um, a bank above the freeway, and then come, going, this is going east, and then kinda pop out at Willow Lane, just below the Spectrum Club.
Is, is, Class One is where you don't share with cars, right?
That's correct.
Is, is there any of that that's Class One, then?
It's one hundred percent.
Okay, and then the, um, you had said the Kaneo Creek South was, that was a Class One route also?
Yes.
Can, how long is that?
Maybe a half a mile, 'cause I think it's a, or maybe a little bit more. For, from Jan's Road to the end of Kaneo Creek South is just under, over a quarter mile, I think is the length of that park. And then, um, you have Page Lane, so it would be not on Page Lane, it would be adjacent to Page Lane, where you'd have a Class One go down, and then it would go within the Caltrans right-of-way under the bridge, where there's, um, it's actually flat under there, and then staying on the east side of, I mean, the west side of Page, there's, um, a, CRPD has a parcel there, and we're working in conjunction with them. Part of the kickoff meeting tomorrow, the, um, consultant is doing a planning and then design and specifications. So that part between the twenty-three and Gainesboro hasn't really been completely designed yet, because that's what they've been hired to do, but that's the concept, to get them up to Gainesboro, either by a bridge or some other means that hasn't been designed yet.
Is there, uh, in the future, an ability to make it longer? Because I, I think those Class One bike paths are great for kids, if you can make it a little bit longer than half a mile.
Oh, well, for example, then you go north of Kaneo Creek South and you hit Kaneo Creek North Park, and that's where it connects to Kaneo Creek North, and you can ride your bike up through that, through that park, and then you can, the park district has an opening up to Floris, so you'll be able to get up to Floris, and there's, it's all part of the master plan, but this, this one part is just Class One in this one area, 'cause that's the constraints of the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion? There's, oh, a question from Mr. Gillette.
If I understand correctly, the, um, the type of bypass that you're looking at between Rancho and, uh, Southbound on one oh one, is that similar in nature to the one that's, uh, at Summerlin Montecito? Is that a good model, or is that?
Yes, that's what we'd like to look similar to that, especially with the, um, the, the stonework there, too.
Yeah, it's, it's lovely. I looked at it again last week. But let me ask, uh, Mr. Watkins, and in our, in our circulation plan, our master plan, are we still looking at some sort of a vehicular bypass higher up on the ridge to get from, what is that, Kaneo, Kaneo Ridge Road, the road that goes up by the Spectrum?
Uh, Willow Lane.
Willow Lane, that goes up above to get vehicular traffic from, uh, from that portion of the south of Moore Park Road bypass to Rancho Road? Is that, are we looking at that at all?
Nothing in the circulation element, though, for that connection.
Okay, so we're going to rely on, on coming down Kaneo School Road, Thousand Oaks Boulevard becomes the only alternative, and, okay, well, that's something that we may wanna, uh, while we're looking at this, looking at that also as another alternative, when, uh, when the need, uh, when the need arises to bypass certain, that certain area with vehicular traffic, not dissimilar to what we did with Hillcrest from Thousand Oaks Boulevard out to Ventoux Park many years ago.
And with, and with that Hall and Drive connection that was done a few years ago.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Motion? Mr. Glancy?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Um, I move that we receive the status of, of the BAT recommendations, the, uh, receive the status report, and then on seven C, that we, uh, approve, uh, points one and two.
Any comments to the motion? A vote? A vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, our next item is redevelopment agency reports, and there are none, and committee, commission, and board reports, there are none. Item 12, council issues and recommendations, follow-up reports on meetings attended by council members, and Mayor Pro Tem Glancy will present a report on the SCAG meeting.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I attended the Transportation Communication Committee meeting, and one of the things covered was going over the procedure for the, the hearings, the public hearings on the regional transportation plan. There'll be three public hearings throughout the greater LA basin with videotaping available in some arenas. One of the other items covered was a multi-county goods movement plan. So it's, it's encouraging to know that the planners are indeed looking at, how do you move all the goods that come through our area in somewhat expeditious fashion so as not to, so negatively impact the quality of our lives? So those, the various, oh, VCTC's working on that, Orange County Transportation Commissioner, whatever their group is, and most of the counties in the area have representatives to, in that effort. So, my report.
And?
Recommend that we receive and file.
Will we vote on that, please? All right, City Manager report?
Madam Mayor? carries 5-0.
I'm sorry. I think she's done, you can go now.
Sure.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. By way of follow-up from requests from the public, one subject, Caneo Mobile Home Park, we had four speakers, and I just want to reiterate for the, for council's benefit, as well as the speakers and others who are interested in the subject, that the city is doing everything it can to, basically following council direction at the staff level, but we are, as a municipality, trying to balance the rights, legal rights of the property owner with the interest of the tenants, and we are working our way through that. I did personally talk to the speakers that were here tonight afterwards to reassure them of that. It's a difficult, complicated, complex issue, and we are doing what, what we can. We're trying to get to a win-win, and we'll do our best as your staff to work through the uncertainty and misinformation, misconceptions about what's going on, but we will get there. There is a meeting this Saturday, January 12th, at 10:00 AM, going from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the Caneo Mobile Home Park, with, Councilmember Fox will be there, and staff will be there, and we will work our way through some of these issues with those tenants. And there will likely be subsequent meetings, and we'll have information on the city's website. A flyer is being put together. Linda Papastas, the Assistant City Manager, will work with the tenants there to make them aware of the meeting and the logistics. We are coming back to council on the 22nd, and I'll get to that in a second. So that's it, by way of follow-up from requests from the public. Legislative issues, the, at the state level, the governor, Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, gave his State of the City, the annual address today. What did I say, State of the City? Oh geez, sorry, State of the State, it's getting late. The item that we're interested in, among, there are several of them, but the main one is the state budget situation with the $14 billion deficit looming over Sacramento's head, and how that will increase or impact cities, and we are monitoring that. It will likely impact us at some point. Okay, by way of future council agendas, on January 22nd, that'll be the next council meeting, three public hearings, one of which will deal with the Caneo Mobile Home Park issue, and that's the continuation from the December 18th public hearing. And we'll have some follow-up from the issues that were raised tonight. And then also, there'll be the public hearing for the Elms Plaza Mobile Home Park situation. And then the third hearing has to deal, has to do with the flagpole heights. They're going from 25 to 40 feet. It's already gone to the Planning Commission, it's a municipal code amendment, it'll come to the city council on the 22nd. After that, on February 5th, there'll be a special meeting dealing with the land use initiative, with the report from the consultants that we were talking about earlier. That report will be presented to council on February 5th. And that's it, by way of City Manager follow-up.
There are no closed sessions this evening, and we are going to move to adjournments. Our first adjournment this evening is in honor of Frank Leipold. Frank began work at the city of Thousand Oaks in 1980 as a landscape trainee, and after several promotions, he received the title of crew leader. He was responsible for several special projects, including the annual weed abatement program and the graffiti removal program. His friendliness and cheerful personality brightened everybody's day, and he will be greatly missed by his coworkers and family. We would like to express our deepest condolences to Frank's mother, father, and his entire family. Our second adjournment this evening will be presented by Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight is our first meeting in January, and it has been our custom since January of 2002. We adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiori. Alex passed away in 2002, and so it's been six years since we lost the father of Thousand Oaks. And so at the time of Alex's passing, the council thought it was appropriate to each year remind the community in a, in a, in an appropriate way just what this individual has meant to our community. Alex was first elected to the very first city council in 1964. Alex served an unprecedented 30 consecutive years, seven terms, on this city council. During those 30 years, Alex was best known for many things, but I think most notable was his ability to listen. In today's world of electronics and high-powered politics, Alex chose to set up a card table every Saturday morning at the Jan's Mall. And for 30 years, with very few exceptions, Alex Fiori sat there and for several hours, listened and talked to residents. Truly remarkable. His contributions to the city certainly stopped on Saturdays. He was a prominent figure on Tuesday evenings with his decision-making ability, and most importantly, Alex's finance background. A Thousand Oaks has been known now for 40 years as being a financially stable city, in large measure because of Alex's financial background. He was a Vice President of Finance for Rockwell and a controller, and his financial background and his expertise set the course for our city in many ways for what we enjoy today with respect to the stability we have in our city budget. As you drive around town, you might come across a few venues that have Alex's name. There's a playfield, Fiori Playfields, the Teen Center, Alex Fiori Teen Center. A few buildings and areas are named after this gentleman, and it doesn't do the contribution that he made to this community for over 30 years justice. He was one of the leading proponents for open space preservation, and Alex was one of the first people to negotiate with developers to have them to contribute to schools before it was required by state law. Truly remarkable man. Alex is, has family here in the community. In fact, I just saw Katie over the holidays, his wife Katie, sons Tom and Rick and daughter Norma, all of them live here in the community. And as always, Alex is missed very much, and so it's my pleasure to...
It was in 1968 that I first started coming down here to talk to people, because I recognized the fact that people would, that knew me would call me at home, but people that didn't know me, that had problems, would not call.
Really easy to get ahold of, not your typical council person, he's always around when you need him, he's always there.
I figured, gee, why don't I just sit down at the mall on Saturdays with a sign, and I created a little, a friend of mine painted a little sign for me that says, hello, my name is Alex, I'm Councilman Alex Fiori, I'd like to discuss your concerns about city matters.
And we wanted to know if the city has any kind of programs to help people.
Alex is somebody that I think most people are very comfortable talking to. You know, he sits down there in a very casual situation and is willing to discuss all kinds of city issues, and in many cases, will immediately work to resolve the problem right after he has met with you.
I had one gal came down here practically in tears, because she bought a brand-new home, and was only two or three years old, and the house paint kept peeling, no matter what she did.
And I went over to the Jan's Mall, and I sat down at the table, and I just started to cry. I was so distraught. And I explained to him the situation, I gave him the paint, gave him the pictures, he asked him a lot of questions, and said, let me see what I can do about it.
And I got with the builder, and I talked to him, and I finally got him to go out there and examine the house, and they finally agreed that they had made that house with green untreated wood, and they, they promised that they would strip it all, put brand-new siding on and paint it, and they did it. Huge job. I mean, that's something that could have cost a person 20,000 or 30,000.
He has the respect of many in the community, and he's able to help people because of that. They know he's a good man, they know that he is there for us, there for the people.
Because of his efforts, he's helped achieve, along with his peers, with great community input and extraordinary community. It's been fun. I'll miss it.
He was a prize for this city then, he's still a prize for this city now.
99.9% of the people in this community, I'm convinced, love the community, love the quality of life, and to that extent, they can look at Alex Fiori after I'm long gone and say that I was responsible for 20% of everything that happened in this city that they liked. Of course, I may have been responsible for 20% of everything they didn't like, and I say that because I've been one of five for the, for the existence, since the existence of the city to now. So I'm, I'm proud of the city and proud of what my accomplishments have been, and I'm going to be staying in this city because I love it that much.